Teaching every student rigorous and relevant experiences, not with the rise in achievement through exceptional teaching. Chris, would you like to call the role, please?
I will. Well, here's Emily Cowan.
Here.
Coons.
Here.
Kaleska.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We are all present at this point in time. Thanks, Doug, for coming to cover us. Thanks for everyone else who's here. And thanks for those of you joining online. We were able to get this figured out here on Monday in Houston. I think this is gonna work. We'll give it a try and see how it goes and we'll assess afterwards. So. Chris, public comment?
Yes, I have two people that emailed me because their choice as one of our options was to attend virtually. And because it is not interactive, I do have two emails I'd like to read. I want everyone that is here and everyone that is listening, listening virtually to remember, public statements typically aren't responded to, but the board is here to listen. So I will go ahead and read the first one to register with Ann Johnson. And here is her statement. On November twenty-fourth, families received a letter listing the types of metrics that are being monitored to determine if a class, grade, school, or the district need to go virtual. On November twenty-ninth, I emailed superintendent Idol to request the specific thresholds of these measures independently or in different combinations that would result in a closure. He was, he has not acknowledged or responded to my email. As a result, I filed a public records request, but this question remains unanswered. Knowing there may be high case counts after the holidays, what thresholds has the board approved to close a class, grade, building, or school? And it was signed Ann Johnson. The other one I received is from Stephanie Edmonds. And says, good evening. I wanted to give a brief update about COVID in Johnson County and some concerns parents have shared with me. Some of the board and administrations are aware of. This week, five hundred and forty-three Iowans have died and four members of Johnson County have also died this week, including the former mayor of Solon. I also saw a fundraising post about a young mother in North Liberty in a hospital with heart failure and pneumonia caused by COVID who might not get home for Christmas with her daughter. In the month of November, Solon schools had sixty-six students and ten staff contract COVID. For this month, we have seen lower numbers, which is great, but with the holidays and some relaxation of restriction of indoor dining and sports events, we will see how these things affect the numbers. The vaccine is also here. About seven hundred staff at UIHC have received the vaccine. I will be one of the last staff to get it because I do not see patients. I was told it might be made before I am vaccinated, so I am not sure how quickly the public will get it. Vaccine trials have just been done for children. I also wanted to alert the board to some concerning activity related to sports. I have heard from parents that some wrestling parents are having gatherings in people's home, people's houses this week. Typically, they involve hot blocks and no masks. Would strongly encourage that to the director to look into this issue and discourage these gatherings. I understand that you cannot ban them, but I think leadership is important here. I have also heard that a player for Benton basketball tested positive for COVID and that he played and that we played them on Friday. No one on the Solon basketball team was quarantined. I spoke with Susan Veleta of Johnson County Public Health, and she suggested the A D contact JCPH for guidance on what questions to ask the Benton A D to determine exposure. I encourage this to be done so parents know about what this exposure might be for their child. Thank you to Chris for reading this update. Thank you to the board for having a virtual meeting option, and thank you to Solon for being safe during Thanksgiving. And it's signed sincerely Stephanie Edmonds. And those are the only two that I have. And I did not, I'm sorry, I did not put sheet out due to COVID. I should ask anybody in the audience besides one who's invited, anybody else come to the statement? Nobody raised their hand. So we're good.
Hearing none. We'll move on. Celebration achievements. First thing we have up is our visitors from the middle school student project.
Our middle school students have been working in with Mrs. Coons in her, this is your Thompson gifted class. And they've been working on a project. They invited me earlier this week to run this idea by me. Personally, I was so impressed. I thought, geez, why don't you just come to the board meeting and share that with the board? So, all yours. Thank you for coming.
You guys want to come up if you want and stand? And then make sure to say your name and what grade, you're all in eighth grade, right? But make sure to announce who you are. Say it.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank Dr. Idol for inviting us again. I'm Bree Hennig.
I'm Michaela Keller.
I'm Lucy Mallard.
I'm Piper Argley.
We are part of a group of eighth graders who are working on a project with Mrs. Coons. We wanted to find a way to inform the Solon community about what's happening in the schools, the city, and area businesses. With COVID nineteen, negativity has been more prevalent, and many people are not aware of all the good things happening in town and in the community. We found a way to share this with the community through a podcast. Michaela?
So covering the businesses in Solon, during these times especially, Solon really did find creative ways to stay open and stay safe because businesses are just such an important part of the community here. And one of the topics we'd like to address on our podcast is promoting these businesses and like when they're going to be available, if they are open, what hours. And we want the public to be informed of these businesses because they're just really important to Solon as a whole. And especially with this year, because it's just so many different changes and everything. So one of our goals is to be a source that people can look to to find like accurate and good information involving local businesses. And we also want this to be carried like throughout just Solon entirely, like whether it be the school district or like the city news and businesses. And we're really trying to like cover every, not everything, because that's, but we're really trying to cover just the community, not just one aspect, but just all the good aspects and. Now, I'd like to play you a demo of our podcast.
We want you to keep in mind this is purely a rough draft. It will progress as we get going, I assure you.
Solon Speak, it's a current state of the Solon.
Hello, Solon Speak, podcast dedicated to giving you updated on current events in in years.
I'm Caitlin.
And I'm Grace. Today, if you're actually listening.
Speaking of breakfast, I'm Joe B. What's a Solon's favorite cereal?
What?
Ice Krispies. Should I be a meat box with flakes?
No, I like Ice Krispie better.
I'm Grace, still.
Yeah, well, that's good because good vibes is up there again. You can go in and order, but it's strongly recommended order online. This will cut down your wait time and one of the most expensive ones. Also, another thing to tell you is Randall Park has two ice cream companies named Republics.
Sorry, I'm not president. I currently have three state offices. Will you be asking on the way up to me?
Grace, do you have any plans for the holiday?
No, just stay.
That's smart. We all have to keep in mind that the holiday season is coming up. Be sure to stay safe and follow the CDC guidelines, which have dominated social networks, ten million people. Wearing a mask if you can't produce your speech.
Questions?
So that's just like ours.
And we have met with the city and they have given us a lot of new insight and things and ideas that we can add to better our podcast already. So we will be working on that in the following weeks and months.
Okay, so moving on to the flyers. As you can see, we have the QR code which will take you to the website. And our website will have the episodes, it'll have all of the episodes, and also have some surveys in case you feel like taking a survey. And I'll have our email on there in case too. So does anyone have any questions or suggestions for us moving forward?
Something we can do for our school webpage?
Yep, we talked about that, didn't we? Linking to our webpage. And you know, right now you have solonspeak@gmail.com. If you wanted that to read, solonspeak@solon.k twelve dot IA dot U S, we can set that up for you too. If you want it, if you want that to be a district, if you want that to be a district website, we can set that up for you. Yeah.
We were also discussing with the city online, looking at the city one page too possibly, just because we want it to be like easy to access because there's no like point doing it if people can't find it and listen to it.
And we even discussed having an icon on their app, which will make it even easier.
Yeah, so like just click on it and go right back.
I was thinking of registering as one of the podcasts, when I travel, when I used to travel. I built a podcast that was smaller. I was kind of built on the airplane. I had a few that I listened to and because then it just updates you. So we could still look at these on either Google Podcasts or there's a couple of ones.
Yeah, we're just like.
It's definitely something we're looking into.
Yeah, we're playing around with just like different where to upload it and just how we want the, like if we are going to use like a podcast app or something to how's our episodes, just how we use it and help.
And what like has the best like sound recording and stuff. We're kind of in the experimental stage deciding where it's going to be regularly right now.
I think this is very, you guys, very well spoken. At like eighth grade, it's crazy, but you're doing a great job. And anything you can do to help too even on the school email or the city, I think it's great. Something local and gives positive news and lets people know what's going on. We talked about communication as a board, so this is another way to let people know what's going on.
So you guys have longer term plans in the podcasting field? Is this, are you guys interested in journalism? You know, what's kind of your longer term plan? How do you, how do you think this fits into what you might want to do in the future?
I know Grace Cooper is one of our, she's not here with us, but I know she is interested in adding to the journaling avenue.
And we always want it to be like, even if it's not what we see as a career path, it's just something that can help us grow. Like just if we do it through high school, expand our minds and just have so many extra benefits that, yeah.
And our goal is, we want it to, once we actually get it like going, to as we get older, we love high school. We want to recruit some younger people to the podcast to keep it going, like so it's not just a thing, we're just us.
Because I like the idea of the community segment, because I also, you see some of these ones where you do a podcast about them. You're going to be teachers, you're going to be coaches, you're going to be people from the community just to mix things up. And you think, you think like, what's your schedule? You think, oh, weekly podcasts, a monthly podcast. It depends on which direction you go, you know, the amount of content you need. And I know we talked as a board about, you know, maybe even this, like, you know, live streaming some things and having some students do, and maybe they're streaming the middle school basketball games or the high school games or the soccer games or whatever, whatever sport it is, across country. I'm not sure how you, you can be scattered along the route and live streaming that over the, over your cellular connection. But you know, and what they're trying to do is try to find where students' passions lie. Make sure we align some of the things we're trying to offer with where people want to go because not the names are old, but you know, the things that are available now are different than when we were, but we're trying to not confine what we offer based on our experiences, but instead what, what you guys are interested in. So.
I think it's so important that, you're a very important member of this community, okay? You're age group, and the kids are younger than you and earlier. So having your perspective on what you're seeing, what's going on, and how you view that is so important. So this is something, it is really just incredible. I'm a Solon guy, I'm up here fifty years, right? A lot of my guys. So to have you guys take this on is tremendous. What are you working on? Is this during the day? Is this something you're doing in the evening?
We are all a year ahead in language arts, so we have two free periods. And that is the time with our other language arts departments that we are working on this. And then we also have other times of the day where we have free time. And we are, with some of the other things that we are trying to implement, there will be time for us to be doing some more things outside of class.
Very discussed working on it like over break possibly, just so that when we come back, everything will be like ready to go right when we left off. Everything just we can air.
I think it would be even greater if Dr. Brown mentioned you, to get some other folks involved in terms of an interview. So, because you would add some very unique questions to a business owner that all of us may not ask them. Because you see things differently through your eyes. And so I think that would be a tremendous opportunity for you that if it works in their schedule, in their schedule, to have somebody come in for fifteen minutes and sit down and ask them some questions and see how they answer when you ask them versus when we ask them. This is really, really neat. I'm excited for you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. We're excited to see where this will go.
I got one last question. Do you guys have, do you guys have the equipment you need to do this?
We have, you know, the minimum at the moment, we're just struggling getting something that had great audio that can also convert into, you know, the online stuff.
You might be able to borrow our fancy thing that you choose twice a month?
Or I bet Mrs. Coons can even talk to Mr. Seaton or Dr. Lyons that we could get you probably your own equipment.
So let's figure out what you guys need and talk and work with Sean and Dr. Lyons to figure out what we can do to make sure this experience is a good one. You guys get the most out of it, so.
Thank you so much.
Just let me know, because I would love to be interviewed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, next up under Solon, next up we got administrative.
Yep, you want me to?
You want to start with something like testing, professional development, or just general stuff?
Why don't we have Josh? Josh, are you prepared?
Yep.
All right, we'll just have Josh share a little bit administratively, testing and professional development coming up.
Do you want to share my?
Let's see, I'm going to stop sharing and let you share.
Sounds good. Let me, hold on, give me a second here. Make sure I have the right thing. There we go. So just real quick, I just wanted to provide a brief summary of a couple of things as we're moving forward into January. As you know, the, this last month, we've really, actually the last six to eight weeks, we've really tried to pull back from professional development, CLT time, just to give some more opportunity for teachers to engage in some individual learning preparation. Opportunities for teachers to kind of decide how they, how they want to proceed with some of their work. And I, and I think it's been well received, given the situation. Now, now, moving forward, what we really want to start taking a look at is digging into, or starting to slowly dig back into some of our goals and priorities moving into January and kind of reintroducing the structures that we've had in place previously for CLT time on Thursdays as well as we have a couple of professional development days coming up Monday, January eighteenth, and then, hard to believe, February fifteenth, which will be here in a blink of an eye. So as we, as we're looking ahead to January eighteenth, we're really going to provide time for building specific goals and priorities. So at the K-five level, PK-five level, we're really looking at some math, doing some math work and really digging in during that month and launching our efforts around open ed resources, having Grantwood A A digital learning consultant come in and support the K-five team, understanding the aspects surrounding open education resources. And then middle school professional development, coming back to something familiar that they've done before, the guaranteed viable curriculum standards. I know they're going to look at some RTI, response to intervention, things at that level, especially with English language arts and supporting kids. And then high school, coming back again to the guaranteed viable curriculum standards and also kind of doing a review of where they are in regards to some of the work that they've been engaged in, as well as think about mitigation and schedule and all those different pieces. February, we're going to come back and look at proficiency-based learning, which we had in October through Solution Tree. We'll have another consultant with us likely virtual right now to support that work. And again, the work around proficiency-based and evidence-based teaching and learning is something new for us. And it's, the purpose is really to expand beyond standards-based grading, but really look at what does proficiency look like? How do we support our students in that area? I've already talked with an area school who is doing some of this work and getting some ideas from, from them. But again, moving forward into February's PD, we're just continuing to learn. It's an introduction and really digging into the theory and philosophy behind that and building our own capacity, K-12. And then there'll also be some opportunities for some building specific PD. Then, just real quick, there was a lot of question marks up until about a couple of weeks ago about the Iowa statewide assessment of student progress, which was put on hold last year. Again, this was a new assessment introduced two years ago during the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, which we, our students took with paper pencil. And it was just announced a couple of weeks ago that we will be moving forward with Iowa's statewide assessment of student progress this year. The state testing window is March fifteenth to May fourteenth. And then the Solon testing window, we've determined will be March twenty-ninth to April twenty, or April ninth. Give us a nice two-week window. That timeframe seems to work because there's not a lot of extra assessments or other things going on that we can put this in place. Again, the Iowa statewide assessment of student progress or ISAS is built for third through eleventh grade, with I think fifth, eighth, and tenth grade taking the science portion. And we've determined that this year, just in the midst of everything and not trying to introduce something new and trying to take the assessment online, we're going to, again, take this paper pencil. We will look at for those students who are online through Adventum, as well as those who are homeschooled, providing them an opportunity to take advantage of this assessment so that they can participate. Just, and then just, just some other general information about reporting. Two thousand twenty-one data will be compared to the two thousand nineteen data. There's expanded growth reports for district building and student-specific information. There's expanded individual reports, providing more specific information regarding individual performance. There's some really nice reports that are going to come with this, this next year. Then for staff administering the assessment, there'll be some online training through an online portal for test security, accessibility and accommodations, and then working with, within that test environment. And then underneath this, I just included, and I'm not going to go through this, but just as a reminder, here, here's our assessment data from two thousand nineteen, which we were really, really excited about back then. And we were, we were geared up and ready for last spring's assessment before the pandemic and excited to see what we were going to or how we were going to perform on that. Any questions?
Questions for Josh?
I know we're really excited about the state administering this assessment. I mean, we feel good about how our kids are going to perform. They've been in school all year. So we feel good about that.
I know one of the sessions I was at, there's a broad state reading, I think we went to our reading the last month. And they were just talking about the, some of those numbers they have at statewide level are showing similar extreme drop-offs from the sporting process state. So, and implications for being out of classrooms. So I know if they submit a opinion that data may better understand that it's big. And I think it's great that we're doing that here. It would be nice to get some more data, but it'll be interesting to see how they can bear back two years with the data. There's a lot happening in terms of, I'm assuming our building principals, their series of new teams are kind of they're figuring out ways to move on with those kids and with those grades without that data from last spring. So we're filling the gaps with our own data.
Yeah, and was it last, last month, Mrs. Taper presented some K-five data? And it was just, I mean, it showed similar, when you, when you break from school in March and you don't come back until August, you're going to see some slide. Why I wanted her to present it is, I think we assess again in January, early February.
And we reassess them, not everybody, but anybody that was fully accessed.
Yeah, you're, you're going to see some remarkable gains. Although we slid back, there's some remarkable acceleration going on because of what's taking place in the classrooms. And so that, I want to make sure the board recognizes, teachers are doing a great job and our kids coming to school every day is really making a difference. We're going to close that and go beyond what we lost.
Any other questions? So data, I guess, last thing I wonder, unfortunately, if you got something else, just a summary, kind of around the market up in Iraq, COVID-wise, what we're seeing and.
Yeah. Yeah, so just quickly, quick COVID update. We, we didn't experience it. Excuse me. We didn't experience any type of dramatic uptick in our COVID data following Thanksgiving break. So really appreciate our families and their efforts with mitigation outside the school day, which we're pretty sure had a positive impact on, on our current data. As of today, looking at data today, we had less than one percent of our students absent today. We had less than one percent of our staff absent today. We had twenty-eight students quarantined today and two staff quarantined today. In the last seven days, we've had three students test positive and zero staff test positive. And this all comes off of our COVID data sheet that the nurses and the secretary update for us daily. Mitigation, we continue to learn from our experiences and tighten or adjust areas of mitigation. Our basketball and wrestling teams have been doing very well with mitigation during practices and games. Casey, our athletic director, is in and out of practices and consistently speaks with coaches about measures to keep our kids safe. Casey's done a great job with conversing with Iowa Department of Public Health, the Athletic Union, in reconfirming their guidance. And then also conversing with WAMAC A Ds and consistently speaks with those A Ds and our coaches and about measures to keep our kids safe through competition. New measures were implemented in band and vocal following a short break that we took. These measures have increased mask use and spaced students out further in rehearsals and during class. The, the measures will be reflected in tonight's band concert, which is also being livestreamed tonight. Personnel, since November first, I think I shared some of this with you last week, we, or last month, we hired six subs. But we were, teachers were being stretched to cover when we had vacancies during their own planning time. So we went ahead, just hired six full-time subs to show up every single day, regardless of absenteeism, to ensure we could less likely have to use an existing teacher. There's been several days where we've just had additional staff, and we've tried then to provide our current staff additional breaks during the day with that. We also brought in sub-associates every day, just lock them in through tomorrow. And then a highly qualified nurse has been coming every single day for the last three and a half, four weeks to just take care of the everyday responsibilities our nurses have, as they tend to be added additional responsibilities of COVID. And these are measures that we're going to lock in for the first two weeks coming back, and then we'll just assess it two weeks at a time when it comes to some of these measures. We began the year with almost a hundred students enrolled in, online through Edmentum or Apex. The number within the first three weeks of school dropped to around seventy. And we begin, we're going to begin the second semester with that number down to approximately forty. So more students are coming back. We continue to prioritize choice for families. We provide parents' choice through this pandemic and we know our families really appreciate it. Communication went out today to all families. We want families to know how grateful we are for their support, their efforts with mitigation. And we want to prepare them though, for the additional challenges of the winter months. With seasonal illnesses and increased indoor activity, January and February regardless of the year, challenging months. And so, we want parents to be informed for the extreme scenarios or measures. Of a one to two week closure, whether it's a building or, or the district. With, with limited notice, forty eight, two to three day notice. And so we just want parents maybe over brave, just to be thinking about that scenario. If we gave them three days, do they have a game plan for one to two weeks? And so that communication went out today. Any questions?
Just real quick, I just touched on one thing real quick. I'm assuming it's similar football, ball sports activities, if there's a, if, if, for athletes that are in a different county. The host county is the one, the, the public health is, is doing the contact tracing. We're assisting as needed, but it's the host county that's tapping that, right?
Yes, yes, we, we, we still consult, I mean, we still use our guided questions and we still, I mean, our nurses.
The initial stuff is coming from, the initial stuff, if, if there's a positive case, it's, it's starting there.
Starts there, correct, yes.
And so, coming back, well, the extra nurse coming back, extra subs coming back, so. And yeah, I think, I think it's, I think it's a great, uh, opportunity to respond as well to, to the request to be cautious. We just have to continue to get that message out, I appreciate you continuing to send communications out to. The community members so they know what's going on and can plan appropriately. I realize it's a challenge with the, some people want a solid number that says if we cross this threshold, this is what's going to happen. But I know you and I had the conversation with Johnson County Public Health back before Thanksgiving and. They don't even have a solid number for their recommendations, they, they talked to us about how you have to look at holistically and look at what's going on. Within your community management, so.
Well, I mean, I think what's important is the CDC recommendations change all the time. How many days you're out, how many, you know, and so it's, it's hard to say today what. A month from today may look like and also what recommendations may be. So I think we just have to keep listening to, you know, national and local and state experts and make our decisions kind of. As we have information.
Yeah, I just, I agree with you a hundred percent and the right answer for the elementary school might not be the same answer for the high school. I think that's something people have to get their head around, but it's. It's, it may not be all or nothing if we have to do online, it could be one grade, one building. So, I appreciate all the work that the U team and the nurses and our leadership team that the building is doing. To stay on top of this, it would be easier if you just say, here's a number and then just. Not investigate it and just say, we'll wait for this magic number to happen, but I think you get more. Appropriate and better fit of a result that you are looking at holistically, so. Next up is. Focus on learning and I'm going to apologize for a second, I'm going to exit the chair. I have gotten phone calls from both of my sisters here in the last five minutes and I'm going to go figure this one out. So, Adam, if you would take over the meeting. I will be back.
Okay, so earlier I alluded to our acceleration of achievement. And this is one of those. Our teachers continue to plug away and they continue to advance our initiatives even through the pandemic. And when it comes to, you know, accelerating achievement, this is an example I wanted to bring to your attention, so book clubs, what are they?
I am Emmy Williams, the third grade teacher at Lakeview.
And I'm Sarah Bluehouse, I am the district teacher librarian.
And so here at Lakeview, the book clubs was kind of our last component of the F B C classroom that we have. That we implemented and so last year, third grade teachers kind of noticed that. One, when our kids were doing rotations and they had like a read to self-rotation, they just really weren't getting into their books and it was easy distracted. And then two, we have high level readers that were meeting less time, I was meeting lots with them in our guided reading groups. And so they were losing out on that time for just discussion, that time to have, that get into literature and discuss it. So, we decided I was going to try it and watch it in my classroom, so I met with Jen O'Hare and we talked. Kind of figured out how we were going to do it. And then how it would look in our classroom. And we started it with everybody in the classroom, that everybody got to choose and so on the very first day, I got the four books that came with our. Our Fontis and Penello that we have and did a book talk, so I did book talks on all four books and the kids got to choose. It didn't matter what level, it didn't matter, they got to choose which book interested them, which I think is a huge component of the book club. So they got to choose their book and they rated them first through fourth on which ones they wanted to read, then I put them into groups. And then throughout the week, which is the next slide, I think. We taught in our Fontis and Penello classroom, there's mini lessons and so it talks about. What, what have you put sticky notes in a book and what do you choose to talk about? And like have you respectfully talked in a group about? And so up here are these different pictures of what the different anchor charts would look like. And each day we focus on a different one, I would pull a group before we would need a whole group. We would talk about it, I would teach them how to do it and then they would be what we call a fishbowl. They would be the group that would model for the rest of the class, they would watch, they then go into their groups, practice it. And then we come back and we add to our notes or anchor charts if you need to. Or agree what went well, what didn't, what questions do they have? And so each day we taught a different mini lesson. And then at the end of their meeting time, they also have to go through, how did they do as a group? Did everybody come with sticky notes, were they prepared, were they, did they agree or disagree respectfully, those types of things. After that first week of really instruction, then it's time for them to kind of go on their own. And so this can be happening while I'm meeting with a group. And so, the next week, one day it's a reading day where they have to read and I give them a calendar of what they have to read. The next day is a meeting day and when they can meet and get together. During that second week, Jen kind of came in and while I was meeting with my groups, she would look at them and check in and see how they were doing. So it's been a great thing and a great addition to my classroom, if you can turn to the, yep. So here's like what my classroom looked like two weeks ago when we were starting book clubs and each one of those is a different book club meeting. That book there is an example of like what a student's book looks like with all those sticky notes in it. So they read a section, they have to put at least three sticky notes in, so they have three things to come and talk to. Things they might put is a new vocabulary word, something they found interesting, a question they have, so different things like that. And so that's kind of what it looks like in the classroom. And then to end up. Things that my classroom said, I asked the kids, I said, okay, I have to go talk to the school board about book clubs and. What, what do you, what do you want me to tell them, what do you think's important, so on the next slide, here it talks about. These are just some things they said, some of my favorite are, I like being able to talk about what we want to talk about in a book, instead of this is Williams. And we did talk about that because I said in guided reading, I have a plan and we have to move and we don't get a lot of time to discuss because it has to be. And here is if it's your time to talk, it's what we get to talk about, so it was fun for me to see that they did pick up on that. And that they like being with different people and being able to talk about different groups, it's not just who they're in a group with. I really like the book clubs and teaches about our topics, the ones like we did were narrative nonfiction this week. For these last three weeks that we were doing them, they really enjoyed it. And they like to pick books that aren't just given to them, I think leads to that lifelong love of, or. Like lifelong love of reading, which is something I really try to. Do in our classroom and so then, after I implemented it last year, all third grade, I said, so like we're just finished, we just had our last day of book clubs today. In my classroom and then we'll do it again when we come back, and we do take breaks from it, you know, it's not something we have book clubs going on all the time because. That too would then burn them out, it's also good that they get to read their own books, but yeah, it's just been a really great component that I really enjoy adding to the classroom.
Awesome. And so I appear because I recently became involved with some book clubs at S I S. And this is kind of helping not only the classroom teachers, but helping me to meet some of the library program standards for Iowa. That I've been working really hard to make sure that our library program does align with the new Iowa standards. So, creating a culture of literacy in the school and then collaborating with teachers have been big goals of mine. So the, I've been meeting with the book club the last couple of weeks and there are some of those students in that picture right there. You can go on to the next slide. So, a lot of what book clubs look like at S I S is very similar to what Emmy described, which is. Nice that they're doing that in third grade and kind of preparing them for some of the things they'll experience through Lucy Cockens at S I S. The teachers at S I S do do book clubs per unit in their classroom. But what I have started doing recently to help teachers as well, as we said, there's been a bit of a slide with some students because of COVID, so. Teachers are doing a lot of guided reading groups in the classroom. But they were struggling to get to some of those kids who are still advanced readers or proficient, who don't need to be in those guided reading groups, so. What I've done is I have started doing a book club with some of those proficient readers. So that they can still be in a group and discussing tests and having that similar group experience. So right now I'm working with eight students from two fourth grade classrooms. They each have kind of a different role each week, so some people are writing discussion questions. Some people are pulling out new vocabulary words like Emmy mentioned or. Summarizing that chapter and then we discuss some of the things when we meet together. So the discussions overall are student led, but I'm always there to help kind of facilitate the conversation if they're not sure how to get started or. Sometimes they don't agree on something that happened in the book, so I'm there to kind of, what, what about this or kind of mediate that conversation. But it's been really exciting to kind of see them build upon what they're learning in third grade, but have kind of more independence and. I'm just there as a facilitator and to kind of listen, but it's enjoyable for me to read a book with them as well, so. I'm really enjoying this collaborating experience with these fourth grade students and it's something we're hoping to continue in January. But collaborating with teachers is one of my favorite parts of being in this position, so I wanted to highlight a little bit more just on the collaboration, if you'll go to the next slide for me. So just to give you a quick idea, this is actually from last school year. So this isn't even a full year because of COVID, but each year I do kind of an annual report for the library. And so this is kind of the number of connections I was able to make with teachers in each building. To collaborate on different kinds of projects, you can just kind of see on the graph there and the connections in each building. And then if you'll go to the next slide, this is the last one. Just thinking about the collaboration that was done last year, these are just some photos from last year of different projects that I was able to work on with teachers in our classroom. So some of those would be things like building in our maker space. So dealing with engineering and design, making things, doing computer science, some coding activities on the computer. Doing breakout boxes for a mystery reading unit, then helping with the community book discussion that happens at the high school. So those are just a few of the things that I was able to help with last year. And it's a goal of mine to continue to keep working on making more connections and to see that grow and grow. Any questions for us?
Lots of questions. So when they choose their books, they just have four to choose from, I mean, you just go from four to start?
Yes.
Will they, as we go farther, will they have more choices or? No, you're good.
So each time, there will be four different books. Yes, so there will be four different books and like one we got done earlier, so they're doing a book review of one of the book they read and it's going to go up on our seesaw. So that way other kids can watch it and then if they like what they see or like a recommendation from their, from their friend, then maybe they'll pick up that book and read it.
That's my question, if they get to interact with the other kids and then choose that book, they're encouraged to try it, that's great.
That fills up, one of my questions is just, you're pointing. How long will they last, is the library integrated into a, into a website for the books that we've got in the library? You know, maybe I'm not sure if I want this book, can I go and listen to your book reports, the discussions on it and see whether or not they want to try out?
And with having seesaw this year kind of being more used since we're preparing them in case we do ever have to go online, that's been a great addition. That's something that we're just trying, that's a new addition to this year that we're trying, so.
And I think the secret beauty of this year is the way technology's going to grow in this district. And just like teachers, it was such a fearful, like how do I use this, now it's like I have to use this. And so people, I think we're going to grow leaps and bounds in technology lines in the next, you know, year and I think it's just going to become part of who we are. And, and I think I'm encouraged by the fact that, as you know, if you're doing guided reading all the time, that's you teaching them learning. When they really get to choose, there are great options for them to have, that's where they're learning, bringing them to the start, so we change that.
It's exciting to hear them talk to each other too, I'm sure, those would be interesting conversations, you want to sit there, right? So the other question I had, no, no, that's a little bit, and Kathy, when she was our librarian, you know, she always sent an annual report. I think it was in June when we got that, if you remember Dan, she, she, at the very end of the year she'd come in and. June's generally a light month and so after soon she gone, she'd come in and do us a report on all of these, that graph you showed about the contacts. It, it brought back, I remember, I remember that chart from Kathy was always one of the things we got at the end of the year, because it's, it's always useful to see kind of what some of those connections are because. You know, the public often doesn't see, they kind of people like raised kind of in the background, they don't really think about all the interconnections they have with. Everything that goes on throughout the year and so, I, I'm happy to hear you pull that stuff together, we'd love to have you come back and kind of give us a year end snapshot of. Of how that went, because I always enjoyed it with Kathy, you know, she'd come in for five to ten minutes and just kind of give us an update, this is what happened this year and. And kind of what's, what the next year.
Yeah, and kind of the neat new things in the library world, you know, as they happen and we don't always hear about them, so.
Absolutely, yeah, that's something I'd be more than happy to do, I think, I think you're right, that's something I'm working on, it's just. It is, the library does sometimes seem to be in the background, so it's exciting to be able to share some of those things and make the community more aware of it.
And it's, it's kind of, it's one of, it's one of the hearts of, of the district.
I think so, but I'm kind of biased.
And a question on the books, you just talked about how they get, you get kids to go back and reread the book after they have the, have the discussion.
Those books aren't in our classroom like right now, they're going to go to another third grade classroom when we come back, but yes, those are. And like there are some books that we've got that I know that aren't in the library that I, like, the kids have just eaten them up, so I'm looking to see maybe those could be books that we. Could get for women and sign over to books in our library, but yeah, and then once the third grade class will bring them back into the room, anybody who wants to read them can always.
Because I'm, I'm one of those people who only, I've got my bookshelf and I only read books and people say, I mean, you're the, like, yeah. But you know, I get something out of it different every time you read it, so.
I know too, at S I S, so the book we're reading is the first one in a series of three, so then now they're all like, oh, I want to get that second one, so that's cool to see them get excited about.
The only problem with series is always looking for that next book in the series. Other questions?
Good job.
Board committee updates, is there anything this month, I didn't have anything called out on my schedule, but.
I have, I have, I've got three things online, so real quick. Davis and Dan and I met a week ago, just kind of started talking again about facilities and. Probably even after the first year or something, probably come back with a little more course, a little update on some of the things we're thinking about and progress and where we're going next.
You'll have to remember on that one that as of last month, we booted Dan off and.
Oh.
And you, you got Jamie out because the only thing I'm trade off is get rid of policy.
Perfect.
I gotta get my complaints and there's just a week left.
We'll bring you up to speak, no problem. I, I told you last month that I was going to have Brian come tonight and kind of give a little update. I, I told you last month that I was going to have Brian come tonight and kind of give a little update on some projects and some ideas on things he's talking about. Totally dropped the ball on my end, not his. I remember about 10 after 5. Didn't think that was quite fair to him to say, can you be there 20 minutes? So he put it on his calendar for January, he will be here in January.
And I should have, it should have been on my notes when I got it. We'll, we'll make sure it's out into the January.
We got it. And then last night the city council meeting, they approved the temporary lease for, uh, through, through March. So they're doing that with the community center. So that's done. We had done it already, where we had them, they finally did it. Oh, and number seven on the consent with this, that's this, really, I guess Davis said, probably just like time value and money thing. There was an opportunity, I think, because of the workload and because of the fact that we don't know what's going to happen, what's going to have to happen at some point anyway to get it out there. So we'll take an opportunity to grab it and take care of it.
The other committees, hearing none, consent agenda. Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to put the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Alaska. Second by Wolf to approve.
Quick thing before we, well, I just wanted to tell you thank you because we're designating you as our paper. Yeah, thank you for all the coverage you give us. I do appreciate you always here and I always see you at all the, the things you can be at. And honestly, I read the paper every week, you know, it's whatever, for to see what's going on. So thank you very much for, for all you do for this town.
I, I read it in the hour, I was, at least part, I got the front. I haven't gotten the fourth section yet, as a fact, but I was at some of those events, so. But yeah, I, I agree with you there a hundred percent that, you know, having a local paper is, is critical. All, all the work you do to cover what goes on with our students is, is very much appreciated, so.
With that, we have a motion of second on the consent agenda. All of the favorites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried unanimously. Action items, only one tonight. Modified supplemental amount, maximum modified supplemental for at-risk dropout support. Again, this is not the money, this is the spending authority, so.
I have the win for Jamie too.
Yeah, this is one of those magic ones where Pat sends us the exact words we've got to say.
Uh, I motion to approve the modified supplemental amount, maximum modified supplement for at-risk dropout for 155,562 dollars as.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Coons. Any discussion?
I'll just say that this is the money that we use for Jake Munson's position at the high school, Francesca's position at the middle school. And then we have some interventionists at the Lakeview that we use this, this funding for and SIS. So.
This is a, so this is a same.
It's all personnel that this is applied towards.
It's all, yeah. If we, we talked about the future, if we want to have another piece of middle school that would turn on this same.
We would look to, yes, yes.
So it's, it's an important, it's an important function that we got. And, you know, unfortunately the function takes more money than what the state does as well, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All of the favorites signify by saying aye. Close. That's all we have for action items tonight. Information items, school calendar 2022, 2023.
Yeah, see if I can make this a little bigger. Okay, so we're looking ahead two years. This is 22, 23. What we did was Chris just helps, she rolls the calendar over and then I go through it. I look at, you know, hours, days, contractual days. And once we get it established, then this went out to the superintendent teacher advisory committee. And they provided some feedback. Now, this calendar does not yet have community or parent feedback yet. But this does have some teacher feedback in it. It's just draft right now. Again, when we send this out to our, our, our teachers, it's non-negotiable. It's, I mean, we, August 23rd is start date. Can't do anything before that. We could go later, but we can't go before. We're looking to put 180 student days in there with a minimum of 10, 80 hours. Spring break is always locked in because we try to coincide with the university. So those are some things that are just locked. What we look at then is when we want to schedule conferences, how we want to adjust our winter break. And then this year we adjusted the first week a little bit since we started on a Monday as far as having an extra early hour or two. So those are the things that we'll play with. Now, in this calendar, I will say was interesting, some, one of the feedback, the original calendar had, we would break for winter on the 21st of December and then come back on January 2nd on a Monday. And a teacher said, hey, my, my kids are graduating, but I remember that they would stay up late on New Year's Eve. And it wasn't January 1st that they were exhausted, but it was always January 2nd that it caught up to them. And so she goes, what if we, instead of getting out on December 21st, what if we waited and got out December 22nd? And then we didn't come back to school until January 3rd? And then I remember my first or second year here, we actually came back on January 2nd. We didn't get very good feedback. So we made that adjustment in the calendar. So, and we also would be coming back after a winter break to four days and not a full week, which is helpful too. So I think the calendar, according to the review that it's, it's had from that advisory group, the only thing that we really need to decide or look at, maybe feedback, is the very first week of school. We're going to start on a Tuesday, but do we want Tuesday to be a shortened day? A full day? So that's kind of questions that we still have to look at in the year.
I think those are good questions. Work with your fellow leadership on, see how that worked out this year. Because then if you start the Thursday as a half day and early out, then you know, early out, full day, early out, if you go back. Because that, you know, I think, I think the board is flexible based on the feedback you guys get, so.
Other than that, we'll, we'll keep getting some feedback and I can bring it to you in January if you want.
And when does Psy, does you, do you go to Psy after for us?
That would, that would be in February. I'd have to wait till February.
I think that's, that, that falls on our target because we generally like to get it locked up before it's spring break.
Okay.
So any comment or respond?
Okay, sounds good.
If you need, that gives you another month to come back. We've got questions for us to contribute back as information items, we get feedback, so. Day on the Hill event, it's a virtual event. We've traditionally not done much of that because of people going down there. We have our legislators coming to see us. There's four different topics this year on four different days. So it may be worthwhile doing, so.
It might be nice to have, I can formate with you guys. Because of your professions, I know it's hard to go down there. But if we could maybe have at least one of you attend virtually each one of them and then you can report back. So then though you're only attending, you're sharing the information from all four, which would be beneficial. We've never been able to do it just because of having to travel on the tiny. So I thought that would be a great one. So I can work on that for you. And then also the NSBA.
Yeah, I was going to talk about that under the, under board learning later, but we might as well do it now. National School Board Association, which was in the video last April. And one of them not because of everything that is going on, obviously. When I was in Chicago, this year they're doing it as virtual. And because of that, they're getting some crisis counts from Oregon. And so what they, Davis and I talked about was, does it make sense to have a board and administrative team all do that? There's, there's nine different tracks that they've got and it might create some good discussion. We could have teachers, Chris and Pat and Natalie, just in the finance side of things. It might prove to be an interesting thing. So we'll continue that discussion. I think that's April 8th through the 10th of 20, what is it, 2021?
I think because of the pandemic, it gives us an opportunity to take advantage of stuff that you guys haven't got to do before, rather than just go over the same learning thing and.
It's an opportunity to interact with people.
Absolutely.
It's the point of everything about doing it in Chicago last year, so.
So I'll email more information out to everybody, we need to kind of communicate that way.
Next up on information items, we were also going to have Representative Kaufman here tonight. We invited him. He's got some hard stuff to travel, this popped up and so he is out of state right now. I'm trying to coordinate with him on another night to do if he wants to try and set up a time to deal with us before the legislative session begins. We're going to try and see what that looks like. And I'll get back to you, or Chris will get back to you when we have options. But we might just schedule a work session, meet for a half hour with them and then adjourn, so. Next up is the final item, there's two present goals review. That's going to be the closed, closed session. I don't know if there's anything, Davis, we, we need to really cover there in open session. At this point in time, we're tied to the district goals, which basically at this point in time are, are managing the district's progress through the year. It's, it's kind of a wrap. I think we touched on a lot of that during the admin reports, we're going to cover that. With that, the next item is closed session. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to go to closed session for section 21, or not five.
One aye.
One aye.
Motion by Anna Alaska. Second by Jennifer Rollcall.
Yes, Wolf? Jennifer?
Sure.
Coons?
Yep.
Alaska?
Yep.
Brown?
Yes. So we're going to proceed into closed session. You guys are welcome to stay. We're going downstairs to the main office. It will be fast, up here to finish off the meeting when the closed session ends. So everyone may head downstairs.
Tim Dwight, stop mine.
You're going to stop sharing.
You're going to stop caring. And Josh?
Josh is still back and still down there.
Yeah, just, just leave, just, Davis, leave the meeting and then you can come back in if you want to.
Okay. I wonder if that was, that's nice.
And you probably brought us this.
I saw there was some last, that was a surprise.
There will be after tomorrow.
Are we back yet? So we're still waiting for Davis, Davis to be back on?
Yes.
Okay, hold on.
So we're waiting for, get the recordings going. It is 7:20. The board has returned to the boardroom after having exited closed session. Reminder, our next meeting is in January. You have a request from Davis and Chris about potential dates for a board learning at the end of January, beginning of February.
Originally we had January 8th, but I don't think that's happening. We're making a different date, so.
So the January 8th date is being canceled and then we'll pick up a new date to pull them through there. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Bush to adjourn.
Motion by Coons. Second by Alaska.
All of the favorites signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays.
One, happy holidays.